Six o'clock according to the big clock on the wall. So I'll call this meeting to order for the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, November the 5th. And glad to see this turnout. We haven't, this is a bigger turnout than we get for the council meeting. So welcome to everybody being here tonight. So we'll try to get through the meeting as expeditiously as possible. So I'll call a meeting to order. We have a call. And the first item is all business, the minutes of the October 1st session. What's your, oh, I'm sorry. There you go. New kid on the block, right? So let's adopt the agenda then as presented. All in favor?
I'm moved we adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is adopted. Okay, now all business. Minutes for the last meeting. What's your pleasure?
I have to abstain, I wasn't here, so I can't vote on it.
I was absent too.
So.
Well, you were here, you and I. Okay. Been moved, now I'll second. Two of us, I guess, would constitute the call, so all in favor? Does your idea? Okay. The minutes are approved, all business is approved. Okay, all business. First item on the agenda is zoning ordinance. Chris?
I'll try not to speak too closely in here. Good evening, Commissioners. Certainly my pleasure to be back in front of you guys to talk about the most riveting thing to come across our table since the sign ordinance. What we've got here is the zoning ordinance. This was presented to the, well, actually it was officially released on the 3rd of September. As we put it on the city's website, notified people that it was available to Beacon Review. We came back and gave it hard copies to the Planning Commission and to the City Council members on the 6th of September. Subsequent to that, let me see if I have my little notes that I took, which I've actually passed out to you guys. I gave you a little timeline. And basically it follows a sequence that says that we presented it to the public, presented it to the boards, brought it to the Planning Commission to make a presentation the following week, this was around the 1st of October, brought it back to the City Council to do a presentation as well, during which time we were gathering information, recommendations for any changes or amendments that need to be made, or things that were omitted, or things that were in the current ordinance that need to be transmitted into the new draft. Just to review some of the changes, I have gotten some good constructive feedback from members of this board, predominantly with respect to, I will have to recognize Tom Flowers on this one, changing Planning Commission to Planning and Zoning Commission throughout the document, just for consistency with the current UDC. But just to walk you through, if you have your copy with you this evening, I just want to touch on some minor edits, just in case you may have also seen these things during the process of your review. Page six, we have a little bit of a graphical error with the footer. Moving to page 13, there is a reference in Table 4.2 to MI, which should be GI, because our current zoning is general industrial, not major industrial. So the next one would be on page 82, where we add the section, which I've included as a handout, on parking for persons with disabilities. The next section that we're making a change to is page 177, under 9.02 subsection E. It talks about the maximum length of a building being 160 feet long. However, the rest of the ordinance, you have the section on townhouses, which talks about a 24-foot minimum, so the eight times 24 will be 192, so that we go from 160 to 192 just for consistency. Next, the section 11.07, which is administrative plats and subdivisions. This is a section of the current Unified Development Code, and we wanted to make sure that that was transmitted into the new code as well.
What page is that on, Chris?
That will be on page 200, excuse me, 212. And it will not replace 11.7, but it will go in as the new 11.7, and everything subsequently will then be shifted numerically downward.
Okay.
I've received a number of comments from Commissioner Flowers that I'm going to discuss with our director tomorrow, since he is the expert of all things in the current UDC, I want to make sure that he feels that those modifications would be appropriate. The next section, 272 and 273, would just be the addition of two additional definitions. One would be subdivision exempt, and one would be subdivisions minor. I can't rebound writing on that. I can't tell, I'll be good. Anyway, basically those two are related to, oh, thank you very much. I'm not really sure. I'll check my notes. So basically what that is, is two definitions that came from the new section of the 11.07 that we added, which addresses the administrative subdivisions. So that was just some clarification, just to make sure that that got in the definition section. So other than that, you know, everyone's had a lot of time to review this. I appreciate the input. And now, to stay on schedule, we need a recommendation from this board to move it on to the City Council to allow them to move forward with their process so that they stay on timeframe.
Before we do that, a question that I had raised was why cannot Planning and Zoning as a commission be responsible for appeals, for variances, and for special exemptions?
That's an interesting question. My understanding is that there was historically a Board of Zoning Appeals that existed within the framework of the Charter, and that there were some decisions that were made by that Board that were not supported by the City Council, and therefore the City Council decided to take on the responsibilities of that Board in approving variances and special exceptions. So that would be something that you would need to take up with, with the City Council. I have had that conversation with them earlier in the year, and there really was not a lot of political support at the time for reinvigorating the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the BZA, much less to pass on that responsibility to the Planning Commission. But that's something that you may want to have a conversation with your City Council member about. I can draft a section into the code that reestablishes the BZA, but I don't think that that would be very politically prudent at this time.
Yeah, that's not what I'm particularly interested in doing. But I see no reason why we couldn't unload some of the burden from the City Council by this group considering at least special exemptions and variances.
Well, I think it would be interesting to get a legal perspective on why there is that separation in responsibilities, to see if there are some conflicts or implications there. I really can't speak to that. But I think that's something that you should have in a good, a discussion with your City Council members. From my perspective, there's really not a whole lot that goes to the City Council that doesn't come through you guys first, as far as rezonings go, as far as conditional uses or conditions of zoning, et cetera. They don't really have a lot of variances on their plate, and the way that we've structured the new zoning ordinance does allow a certain amount of administrative flexibility, that hopefully we can even reduce the number of variances moving forward, so.
So they will allow the delegation of some of those administrative things to staff, but not to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I think that they probably, and I can't speak for the City Council, of course, but I would assume that they would want to focus the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, pardon me, on matters related to planning and zoning, and not necessarily to exceptions to planning and zoning.
Well, you know, and there are a lot of municipalities, I mean, I've lived in a lot of places and done business with different rules and regulations, but there are a lot of places that the matters of zoning changes, or variances, or whatever, come to the P&amp;Z Commission, and they just handle them, approve them or deny them. Now, the thing I've seen that, and that takes a lot of burden off of the Council or Commission, City Council or County Commission, depending on where you are, but, and the thing is, you can, you can always put a provision in there that any applicant who does not like their, the conditions that are put on them, or if they get refused by P&amp;Z, they can always appeal to the higher body, and they can take it up and either approve it or deny it themselves. But rather than just having to rubber stamp, go over the same territory, when there's a pretty simple, cut and dried zoning variance, why can't it just come here and be done with, rather than do it here, and then you've got these three-hour, four-hour City Council meetings, you know, because they've got to see every little thing.
Sure. I agree. Every jurisdiction I've worked for, there have been quite a number, this is the first one, that did not have a Board of Zoning Appeals, and those appeals, it varies, I've never, in my experience, gone through the Planning Commission, but that isn't precluded from occurring. That said, as I mentioned, I can draft a section on.
Well, don't misunderstand me, I'm not pleading for another, for reincarnation of the Board of Zoning Appeals. I was on that as well, before it was terminated, but I think we have all the tools we need to do what we need to do with this current P&amp;Z Commission and the City Council.
Well, what I was going to recommend was to include an addendum, as I mentioned, about the BZA, the BZA's responsibilities, and transferring those over to the Planning Commission. I can, I can draft an addendum that would do that, but I would keep that as an addendum, not as part of the ordinance, it would be part of the red line, and allow the Council just to make that determination of whether they want that to occur.
Well, that's, that would be my intention, to propose it to them for their consideration. You know, if you look at Table 4.3, I mean, it is just filled with special exemptions, and, you know, and that, as it stands now, all will befall the City Council, and that just seems to be a waste of their time.
Well, again, I think that when it comes to land use, and specific land uses, and special exceptions to those, or conditional uses to those, that's, that's really going to be up to them to determine what, you know, what the red line of the sand is between the responsibility of the Planning Commission with the responsibility of the elected officials on the City Council. But I would just, unless there's additional things to add, I would say that, just as a recap, we have the addendum to the Planning Commission responsibilities to better reflect those responsibilities that were otherwise assumed by the Board of Zoning Appeals with respective variances and other things that are, that are listed. I'll distribute that via email before it goes out to the City Council.
I would appreciate that.
We've got the addition of the administrative plats, and we have the addition of the parking for disabled, as well as the addition of a number of administrative and typographical corrections that need to be made. So I would request of the Board that we get an affirmative recommendation to move forward with the provisions as outlined just now, so that we can move this forward and let the City Council start to, not start with their review, but continue their review in the process.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissions. Please.
I think the motion would be to, to, to recommend, to make a recommendation approving the zoning ordinance with the, with the, the additional amendments that Mr. Montesina has proposed.
Okay. Somebody like to make that.
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we proceed, all in favor? Does your right in? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
And public, what a great turnout here. There's actually no free dinner tonight, this one.
Great turnout. Okay, the next item is NX0219 and RA0619, application for annexation and rezoning. Ron?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission and members of the public. I actually received some bigger, larger maps for you guys, so you can take a look.
Thank you.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Share with you another one. Nope, I forgot one. We'll share if need to.
These pertain to item 2D, is that correct?
No, it's going to be 2B. There's 2B.
No, it's, it's 2B.
2B?
2B.
Oh, all right, I see. Yes, okay, thank you.
The applicant is requesting an annexation and rezoning of parcel number 1480129, which is an unincorporated parcel that's zoned agriculture in Carroll County, to multifamily residential R14 in the city, along with rezoning parcel V07011003 and tract 3B only of parcel V070110153. I'll reference that as the Pizza Hut lot, both of which are proposing to change zoning from general commercial to multifamily residential R14. The remaining portions of the Pizza Hut lot are to remain general commercial. The submitted master rezoning plan proposes to not exceed 195 units at a density not to exceed 11.85 dwelling units per acre on 16.45 acres of land. The land is partially developed with the Pizza Hut restaurant on Commerce Drive, while the 14.8 acre tract is in unincorporated Carroll County, and it's undeveloped. An additional 1.4 acre lot on Commerce Drive is also undeveloped. A total of 366 parking spaces are proposed, whereas the current ordinance requires 372, and the proposed zoning ordinance, which is not adopted, requires 337. The development is proposed to have a gated entrance pool with a cabana, community clubhouse, fitness center, cyber cafe, football court, I hope I'm saying that right?
Bocce.
Bocce, yeah. There you go. That sounds much better.
Bocce ball.
A putting green, a boxed community gardening area, picnic tables, a fire pit, outdoor grilled, grilling area, a dog park, a dog wash station, maintenance car wash, and walking trails as amenities for the project. Needless to say, they meet our amenity requirements in the ordinance. Flying colors there. And just for the record, these lots, the addresses to the lots are 135 and 189 Commerce Drive. It's in Land Lot 132 of the 6th District of Carroll County. The applicant is here tonight, they have a presentation for you as well, to try to go over and flesh out some of the details of that proposal, so you can make an informed decision tonight.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Johnson? How many apartments do we have within the city limits of Villarica as we sit here today?
I, unfortunately, I don't know how many units, unit for unit, that we have.
Do we have them per capita? I mean, is there one for every 100 residents, one for every 200 residents? Do we know?
No, there's, I don't know, unfortunately.
Very well. It just wasn't in the report that we talked about, so I just wanted to make sure.
That's a good point. I was wondering, in fact, I had asked Mr. Hatterback, whether we had a housing stock survey for the city of Villarica, Dewey?
Not that I'm aware of, but that's, that is interesting. We, we, unfortunately, this, the city, and when I came onboard, I noticed that there's a lot of, we don't have a lot of the building record information, so it's hard to us to even give a total number of units that we have right now in the city that are multifamily. It's, we, we don't have that information even available.
I think that would be something useful to have for planning purposes, and, so I'd just recommend it. I know Mr. Barber is in the back of the room, and staff can discuss that and decide whether they want to recommend it to Council or whatever, but it would certainly be helpful on some of these applications to know if somebody's bringing in another thousand units, you know, whether there's actually a market for it, and what the. The other thing is.
And just so I'm clear, I'm sorry, is it that we want to know if there's a market for it, or is it that we want to know how many units, just in general?
Overall, I think we need to know what the mix is between detached single-family and other single-family and multifamily, you know, overoccupied and full rent. It's just, it's the kind of thing that can assist the Council and Planning and Zoning to, you know, in, in guiding us in terms of changes to the land use plan and, and other considerations. We, we looked at this property, we maybe missed it, maybe it's back in the bushes somewhere, but we did not see a single yellow sign posted anywhere on this property that we could get to.
Hmm. One was definitely sent out from my office, but I'll check on that.
Do you know where they put it?
If I'm not aware. Being that this property wraps around to Meadowlark Drive, and we filled out three of them total, one for each of the lots, that front Commerce Drive, and one for Meadowlark Drive itself, there should have been a total of three.
We looked all over and drove all around that area.
Back through the high school and came out back through the parking lot, all up in through there, and, yeah.
All right, I'll take it up with.
One other question, when you're doing these, when you're doing these, and you do a great job, I'm not questioning when you're doing your presentation, they're very thorough and got a lot of information. One thing I don't notice in there, is there any sort of estimated tax generation that this property's going to generate as far as school tax, property tax? What are we going to see from this, as a city, as a county, as a school system? Is there an estimation? I wouldn't hold it to a dollar figure, but is there an estimation of that? Is that done as any part of the?
Being that, well, not as a part of the planning and zoning process. That's something that I think would have to come.
But that should be considered, wouldn't it? Whether we're going to say yea or nay, I mean, why we're going to bring something that's going to cost us money versus make us money?
Yeah.
If the cost of the development is outweighed, if the taxes outweigh the cost, maybe we consider it, but if the long-term cost, if it don't match up to the tax benefit, then that's a decision I think everybody'd like to know.
Yeah, and I don't even know, I don't know how, obviously, the tax assessor for the county does that, and how, how long that takes for them to even get together, but just based on land use, which is, being that this is a land use board, and our office only deals with land use, not necessarily taxation.
I understand.
But otherwise, I mean, I think that is a fair point. It's a, it's a good point, it's just I don't know in short order how we'll be able to get that within the 45 days from the tax assessor for every single one of our projects.
I guess the only thing to say is if they've done it before, if they can give you an estimate, and then if you've got other projects that have been passed in the city of similar size, similar ilk, you can give a comparison and contrast, you know, not necessarily going to fall within a certain, you know, number, but they'll be within a certain bounds, is kind of what I was asking, because that's the decision, I mean, because what we decide today, we got to live with.
Oh, yeah.
20 years, 30 years from now, we got to live with it. If it turns into section 8, and it turns into Hampton Court, we got to live with that. So we have to be prepared to whatever we decide, we have to think down the road. It's not just today and how much is going to be made on it today, and how much tap-on fee we're going to get or whatever. We got to think about what the cost of it down the road is, and that's why I think there should be at least an estimate of our tax costs. And that's just me.
What I can do, I can, I can take it back to the department.
Very well.
And, and we can see, because I, we try to stay on, like, strictly land use, but we can see, maybe that can be changed, you know?
No problem. Thank you.
I want to.
And the one thing I would say to, to the staff's credit is that there are specific criteria in the UDC, you know, section 2.03b for, that they are drafting these recommendations towards, and that they craft them around.
And they do, I mean, they do a fantastic job. There's a, it's an enormous amount of information in here. And I mean, it's one of those things where I sit down and read and put it down and come back another night and read again, because there's quite a bit in here. So you do a great job, it's just, just a question I had.
Could we hear from the applicant?
Absolutely.
Kenneth Wood, 350 Research Court, Peachtree Corners, Georgia. Will this be able to scroll back and forth?
That does us no good.
Okay, but you guys have the handout, so the slide basically follows the handout. That way I'll kind of run through them in the order that you guys can see them. So we're here tonight to talk about the project, the 16.45 acres there at the northwest corner, and, and really, what really intrigued us about the property is its location. You know, its location to the interstate, its location to the amenities, its location to downtown, it's off Commerce Drive, which is a road that comes off of 61 as a main drive, and then it comes down and enters the property, and so it doesn't have pass-through traffic, and so it's a good way to enter into the property and not have congestion up on the, on the front of the property. And it's surrounded by commercial developments, it has your shopping, it has your downtown district, which you guys have done a great job, and the restaurants in the area, and everything is very in close proximity. And it was for that reason that was, started looking at it, and then we started to understand the utilities and made sure there was availability of sewer, which we've confirmed, of water, which we've confirmed on the property, and then we started looking at, at how do we enter it, and how can we make the project even better? And so when we first started the project, we actually thought the project was already in the city, and so if you look at your maps, it actually does show a color on it, but then we found that it was not, and that was the reason for the annexation submittal. And so as we started looking at the property and how we could make a larger amenity coming into the front of it, that's where we came up with the idea to take a portion of the commercial development and add it to the property, and then a lot of the right-of-way you see up front. And then a lot of the right-of-way you see up front as Commerce comes down, all of that frontage, all the way past our property, including the little jut-out you see on the front, all that will be dedicated as right-of-way. So when you're looking at that on the, on the plan, that would actually all be dedicated as right-of-way. And so that whole frontage would, that would finish our frontage and then we also have all the frontage on the interstate. The high school is there behind it with the ball fields and so the interaction of everything within the community works really well. As you enter into the property, one of the things that's very different about this is this is, multifamily has changed in, in the, in the past, especially the past five to seven years. Institutional money, large capital money has entered into the markets for them and so they're, they're much larger, they're much newer, they're much more amen, highly amenitized, much less maintenance-free and that makes them a much, much nicer and more money put into them so that you guys can guarantee over time that they're more taken care of and they don't fall within issues that you might have seen on some of the others. This project, I want to make sure you guys know, this has no subsidized financing, this is total market rate on the entire project. And so this is, as I mentioned, this is institutional money and as we were hearing some of the discussion about the taxes, I, we could probably calculate it and email it to you guys and let you know, but the, the value of the project, essentially, it's a 30 to 33 million dollar project is the investment into it and if we knew your mileage rate, we could probably take a stab at, at what that would be, but I know that on a lot of multifamily projects that I've done in different places, that there is a ton of taxes paid every year annually into the system because of the value. And then as, as, because it's the institutional money and as nice as the amenities are, as nice as the interiors are, that keeps reoccurring year over year so they keep up because the building construction is of a very high end.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but you said just a moment ago about something when you enter into the property? What is considered the primary ingress and egress?
Directly beside the Pizza Hut on, off of Commerce. So if you go down, if you're driving, if you turn in on Commerce off 61, you would take a right directly after the Pizza Hut into the property. And so we will enhance that entire frontage to make it feel a little more like a boulevard.
And it'll come in by the clubhouse there?
That's correct, that's correct.
And go into the...
Yeah, we want it, we want, when you turn in there, we want your view to be of the clubhouse and then you're going to...
Are there secondary ingress and egress?
No, not, not in this project. The way, the way it sets up, the other access up, up, up to the top is too skinny to have access there and so there would not be. But this, the project differently than a lot of multifamilies that I see, it's 195 units, which is more boutique size, it's not your 300 kind of your typical of your multifamily that you typically see. And so it's a, it's a smaller community and so the one access point was sufficient as we did the market study and looking at it for the site.
And so it'll all go in and out by the old Pizza Hut site?
Yes, and then come down and enter 61, you know, further down.
From Commerce, yeah.
That's correct.
Is that this hook here? Is that what that is?
Yes, yes. Where you see it hooking out, that's where it touches Commerce. And then you drive and obviously you guys know, once you hit Commerce, you can go all the way down the Chick-fil-A, you know, you can, you can go to any of those because they're all interparcel connected, the way that they set up like that. So the project, as I mentioned, the 195 units, we're able to achieve that with the density bonuses and in addition to the density bonuses, we, there were read out about the clubhouse, the pool, the cabana, all the different dog parks and everything. We also have a large amount of the property, the property is actually 40% open space. As you go across, there's an existing tributary that we've got some buffers on, so all those trees would remain, including trees across the other side of the tributary. We're going to build a, a walking trail that goes across the, across the creek and has a large stormwater pond and so we'll also have trees on that side that will be saved, that'll help buffer from the interstate for the project, which will be nice for the residents. But in addition, as I just mentioned, the stormwater concept, I know stormwater is a really big deal, we've heard it from the city and so our pond will be sized to even, even more than take care of any of the imperviouses being proposed for the property and that would be detained as well as water quality and released back into the creek at a rate slower than it's coming in now for the way, the way that we have it. When you're, when you're looking at, when you're looking at the property, as you come in, as I mentioned, you can, you have the view of the clubhouse and then you'll come through, it is gated and so you would have a call box, the fire department would have a knock switch that you can come in and you would go through the gates. And then once you're inside the community, we have some external garages, we have a maintenance building with a kind of a pet wash station that you see there and then it has a large amenity in the middle. And so we wanted to really try to wrap that amenity with the residents so the residents have the view of that. There was also some discussion earlier about the, the parking and how the current parking ordinance were roughly about six spaces short of the current parking ordinance, but we're about 50 above the new ordinance. And, and one of the reasons we're, we're comfortable being the sixth short and propose that is that, you know, we do our, all our market studies for how much parking we need and so we have definitely ample parking here. And then if you're looking at the site plan, the way it sets up, we do have those external garages that add even a few more additional spaces to this. And then lastly, if you guys have your booklet, if you can go over to, it's the fourth page, it looks like this with the landscaping. And so what we wanted to do was try to put together some renderings to show you guys some different, how we're going to mix in evergreens and some other type of trees along the border with the commercial as well as on the northern side with the residential homes that are there so that we have a buffer for the residential homes as well as a buffer from our residents to the commercial that's there. And that was one of the, on the new UDC, you guys have a really good code about how the buffer works and how you can mix in those plants and the evergreens for, for the way that goes down. And then lastly, on the last two pages are some elevations. The only thing I would caution you and mention is I promise we won't have palm trees and so we were, we've, Eastland has, has constructed these and, and they were last constructed on a Florida project and so that's where the palm trees come from. But it gives you an idea of how we can mix in stone brick and some different hardy, all cementitious materials, good materials that last a long time and try to break up the facades by taking the elevations in and out and doing a good job in that. And then the clubhouse level, since you'll be driving in on the entry, that would be one level and then you would see through the courtyard to the building surrounded by the large green space. And with that, and also we have the pool beside the clubhouse too, right behind it when you're looking at that. And with that, I'll leave any amount of time for any questions you guys may have.
Would you do this construction in phases or...
No, no sir. So, so the way we would do it, just hypothetically, let's say that, let's, let's just say that we were able to start construction after, you know, permitting's a long time, planned development, let's just say sometime in the first of the summer it started construction. Construction on a development like this is somewhere between 12 and 14 months in order to get them and then it starts with, you know, leasing and that's another year to get totally, totally leased. And so the, the plan would not be to go, you know, from a building and phase it because it, you know, with this being, you know, a 33 million dollar project and having, you know, large money put into it, you would want to be able to deliver a finished project so that you have the high-end project day one and you guys aren't left with, are they going to build the next building? So it would come in all as a phase.
Any elevators in any of these buildings?
Uh, no sir.
So you're not planning on any senior residents, there might be under 50, right?
Yeah, it would be, it would be, it would be, well, no, I mean, I mean, what we're seeing with it being a market rate is that, I mean, I can, they could probably come up and tell you even more, but what I'm seeing in, you know, in, in a lot of the different municipalities is that you are getting a lot of people, whether it's singles or, or people that whether they've gone through a divorce or they're, or they're just living as a single and they can be anywhere from, you know, young or they could be anywhere from, from seniors just because they want to live that highly amenitized, maintenance-free, not mow a lawn anymore yard type lifestyle. And so this is, this is really the lifestyle, the new type of multifamily is really a lifestyle that you can, you can lock it and go. You're going on vacation, take the dog or if you don't have a dog, you know, just lock it and go on vacation and not have to worry about the maintenance or anything else.
Now, the market rate, what would that be? You got an idea right now on the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, what market we're talking about?
Well, I have a pretty close estimate, so we're talking about a dollar 30 per square foot. So, these are a lot different than a lot of the ones in, in the area.
You said there'll always be market rate. Would that apply if someone else were to buy them if they wanted to turn them into subsidized houses?
My understanding, and Ken could probably answer better than I can, but my understanding, I mean, once it's market, can they subsidize like that? I've never heard, I've never heard of that.
If they were to change owners?
I have not seen it. I mean, I, I know, I have not seen a deal that was an existing deal and then it went back and became subsidized, you know, like that.
What's the square footage on your single, single bedroom ballpark?
They range from 663 feet to 800 feet in one bedrooms.
So a thousand dollars a month, about $900 a month?
Yeah.
To what, what's the amount?
About a thousand.
Three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms are about...
There's 195, have you thought about what kind of impact it will have on schools as far as kids? Because out of the three bedrooms, you got younger people, you got kids, is, what's, what's the average on 195? How many, how many school-aged kids do you have?
Well, and so this is always debated. We, I was just up in Flowery Branch talking about this and we had Ken Bleakley and Associates who, who create these and they, they give an estimate of 14 to 15% of units would have kids in it. But I can, I can tell you, at the same meeting, we had GrayStar, who's the largest management company in the US, and they had a study in metro Atlanta of 6,000 multifamily units and they had 5.5% that had kids within it. And so the difference, the difference in today is that with the, with the pricing and that the way the apartments are programmed, how nice they are, typically, we're not seeing as many families move in. It's, it's usually more singles or people that can afford it and want the maintenance-free lifestyle.
I understand it's here, what our experience been with, with apartment complexes in this city. And I know you're not from here, Peachtree Corners, but...
Carrollton.
Originally? Well, I'll hold that again. Not yet, anyway. But as far as the, the, you, you get behind a school bus and there's, you know, there's definitely more than 5.5% that get off school bus at apartment complexes.
Especially as they get older.
That's a real, that's real life and that's the deal we have to think about again is 15 years from now, 20 years from now, what will we have? And that's why I ask about the Section 8, it may start one way, but what may, what's going to make it remain market price when you've sold it and moved on to someone else? Which I have no problem in making money and selling it, but how do we ensure that doesn't happen?
So, so the way, the way I understand on all, at least, at least for the last seven years that I've seen all of the, the ones that are, have succeeded 30 million, heading to 40 million, is the amount of investment that you have to make into these, that kind of investment to go down the tubes just, just, just doesn't make sense. And the way that it, the way that you guarantee these are, these are of a quality that will continue over and over is you have someone invest 33 million into a project instead of 8 million or 7 million where they can get, you know, country club money. And so it's just a, it's just a different level of, of a multifamily and construction for it. And as far as the kids, I mean, I, I know that, I know that, like even in my home, I know that everywhere in metro area in Carrollton and, and, you know, as a really older...
The law put a moratorium on multifamily in Carrollton, they had enough.
Yeah, they had a lot of, they had a lot of subsidized they allowed to come in and that brings in, that is, you know, brings in a lot of families with the vouchers and so I, I, I don't see it, but you know, I guess it's one of those things you can, you can never tell, but it is a lot more expensive of a unit than is around.
Any, any property owner can apply to HUD and everybody for, to be included in Section 8 or something of that nature, you know? But the chances of them getting it approved are not as good, you know, in fact, as they used to be even. And some of those programs have been withdrawn and curtailed and we, but there's no way to control that because any multifamily owner can decide it sometime. But I also agree with the presentation, I have a feeling these units and the continued market price for this development would prohibit somebody applying for one of the subsidy programs. Just my opinion, but...
Yeah, there's no way. So 9% is, you know, the way the tax credits and 33 million, there's just no way, there's, they just, they don't do that. It's more when they're like 5 to 6.
And if they've got a lender involved, that's double, no way.
Right.
Now, I live probably a mile away from Interstate 20. I hear trucks traveling that road in the middle of the night and you're right on top of this.
Right.
Is that going to appeal to...
You know, it, it, it actually, it actually does. I mean, the, you know, they can probably talk a little bit because they're on the construction, you know, side, but the, the way the soundproofing is on the new version of the multifamily units, the amount of money they, they spend is, is a much higher level and so I, they don't anticipate in the market studies and walk in the side and getting a feel for it, we don't anticipate that would be a deterrent. I mean, the amount of amenities, everything's closed in, the amount of trees we have to buffer, we just don't anticipate that being an issue. And we think it, a lot of times we see it as more appropriate being closer to the corridors because honestly, if you work, you know, Douglasville or whichever way, Alabama or, or going back toward Atlanta or Carrollton, whichever way, it's easy access, you can hop right on and get to where you need to go.
And I'm continually amazed, I meet people and find out where they work and they live here and they work all the way down on Peachtree Street.
Right.
And I think, you know, I'd, I'd shoot myself before I'd make that drive every day, but there are a lot of people who do that.
Yeah, even for, yeah, I've got some employees that even go for, yeah, really far.
And so this being new construction, I can imagine there are a lot of 20-somethings that would think, especially compared to the apartment prices in downtown Atlanta, they would find this to be very attractive until you had how much gas you're going to have to pay for, but you know.
Right, right. But you guys have, I mean, you know, between the hospital here, the Tanner in Carrollton, the big hospital up off Exit 9 in Douglasville, or now it's 37, I think, but there is a lot of job growth, you know, very close to this as well.
What is the position of the, of the commission?
I recommend that we recommend this, oh, yeah, sorry, public comment.
Mr. Hatterback, we need to do a public comment.
We need to do the annexation before we do the...
So that would be for the city council themselves when they go to do it because they do have to do the annexation and they have to do the rezoning contingent upon the annexation. For us, it's just a motion to recommend approval of annexation and rezoning to the city council.
Public comment, too.
We do need to do the, the public comment aspect of the rezoning. And I would also add that we, we did not do a public comment as it pertains to the zoning ordinance, so if anyone has any comments they wanted to make about the zoning ordinance, this would be their opportunity to do that as well.
Okay. We'll open the Florida public comments. Yes, sir?
Sorry, buddy.
Come forward.
My wife and I have a property in Meadowlark. I don't mind Villarica can grow.
Give your name and address.
If you would just say your name and address.
My name is Faustino Perez. I say my wife and I own a property in Meadowlark. I don't mind Villarica can grow. But they're not mentioning any type of fencing to keeping our kids, grandkids away from these 300, 400 families coming close to the high school. Also, they're over only 50 feet in my backyard, supposedly. You want 300, 400 peoples in your backyard? That's a concern, you know, to, to, to talk about too. And you know, I'm mentioning, you know, it's, it's hard to have a noise behind your, your backyard, you know? It'd be a little bit more to talk about.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Any other comments?
My name is Deborah Ricks and I want to know how close it's going to be to the ball field.
What's your address, please?
Oh, it's, I own the house at 636 Clearview Street.
Okay, thank you.
Which is right off Meadowlark. I want to know what they're going to do about the ball field, how to keep these kids, high school kids, from leaving school and going back over into the apartments. Because I live on Clearview Street, when they get out of school, they're up and down the road all the time, these kids are. And then when school gets out, you can't get down Clearview Street, which I know don't have anything to do with this, but it's right off of it. And we're going to have a lot more traffic and it's already hard enough to make a left-hand turn at that red light at Hardee's. I mean, they have wrecks there all the time. So, we need to think about this and I'm like, Mac, how's this going to affect our schools? You might think there's young people going to move in, but then you might have somebody with 70 kids. You might think there's young people gonna move in, but then you might have somebody with seven kids move in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, sir?
My name's Woody Holland, I live at six forty-three Old Town Road. Hi, John, hey, Mike, hey, Willie, how y'all doing? Um, I don't know you, hi. I own a property that's in the northwest corner of that little yellow thing right there. Um, just a piece of rental property we have. I went down to City Hall, learned what it was all about. I'm a hundred percent behind this thing, makes perfect sense to me. They're bringing in high-end professional people looking forward to expensive, a dollar thirty a square foot's amazing to me. I wouldn't, can't imagine paying that, but I guess people do that anyway, unless I'm just old. Um, it appears from what I'm seeing here that Clearview will be opened up and go between Hardee's and the, uh, the service station there, which will be in, help these folks out that live there, they can get out that way without having to go out on seventy-eight, which also could be a, a way to get back in the back of this thing so they'd show, so choose to do so. But, um, to me, it's, it's, it's a hundred and ninety-five new customers for water sewer. It's thirty-three million dollars worth of taxes come in, or taxes on thirty-three million dollars worth of stuff. We've got a lot of new customers that'll spend money in town, it's a boom for this, for the economy here, they'll eat here, they'll gather gas here, buy their cokes and beer or whatever they choose to buy here. I mean, it's, we, we can't stop growth, we gotta embrace good growth and this to me is makes this, is, is good growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Pro or con? Okay, what's the next? Yes?
Just to make sure I'm, I'm able to answer all the, the questions, we always wanna be transparent in, in any, any zonings we do. And so if you, if you can pull over, you can actually see it from there. Uh, one of the questions, I didn't cover it because we usually go over it in permitting, but we are planning on fencing the property on, kinda from the clubhouse, going up to the top and then down to the bottom. For the same, uh, for the same reasons that were mentioned about, um, you know, stopping people from coming toward them, we actually want this, we want the same thing. We don't want the high school to get out and people coming through our property from the high school or people coming from the property from the north and trying to use the amenities. And so it's just, for the same reason, we will have fencing as well. Um, there's a question about the ball fields and so you can actually see it really well on that rendering, which is on the fourth page for you guys, it has the trees. You can actually see the ball fields. The ball field is across from the stormwater pond and then the buffer. And so from the closest unit, it's roughly about a football field away. So it's roughly about three hundred, it's roughly about two hundred and fifty to three hundred feet from the closest unit over to the ball field. And so from the lighting standpoint, any of that, that would not be a concern. And then the fencing would keep people from coming across onto our, our site. There was also a question about the, the seven kids and so, um, we don't allow the multiple tenants like that. Um, our, our, the, the applications and everything is at a maximum and we, and we usually don't even see this, but at a maximum, it's two parents, two children max. Um, and keep in mind of the hundred and ninety-five, seventy-one of these are only one bedroom. And then you have your twos and threes, but seventy-one are one bedroom. So there's a large amount of those for there. I wanna make sure I answer this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I reserve back to the, uh, commission?
I'm, I'm sure that we, um, approve and recommend to city council, uh, this submission, this, uh, rezoning submission as submitted.
Is there a second?
To include the annexation.
Yeah, yeah. To include the annexation, everything in the presentation.
Is there a second? Been moved in a second, and all in favor? What's your right? Closed. Three to one. The next item is RA oh seven nineteen, rezoned properties at seven eighteen Old Town Road.
All right, so we have an, um, application from Land Art USA Inc. for location seven one eight Old Town Road and land lot one ninety-two of the sixth district in Carroll County. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of the subject property from office institutional, OI, to general commercial, uh, GC. Uh, the proposed use is for a forty-eight unit personal care home, thirty-two unit independent living facility and a commercial out parcel for future development. Um, which will directly support the medical uses, um, in the area and provide Villarica with a range of housing options um, for senior living, which is one of the main comprehensive goals, um, for the area surrounding the hospital. Um, the current O and I zone nor any of the surrounding land uses except the general commercial zone permit a personal care home and, uh, or an independent living facility. Um, mind you, of course, the hospital is practically right across the street and we don't permit these types of uses out there. Um, so this is definitely, um, something that is new out there that we don't currently already have. The future land use map designates the parcel as a medical character area, um, which is compatible with the proposed use. Um, the applicant has, uh, indicated that development is slated to be built in four phases. The first phase would consist of a twelve thousand square foot personal care home building with twenty-four rooms. The second phase would consist of sixteen independent living apartments. The third phase would consist of the second twelve thousand square foot personal care home with twenty-four rooms. Whereas the fourth phase would consist of sixteen more independent living apartments. The entrance driveway is proposed to be matched with North Avenue at Old Town Road for a seamless pattern of traffic. This should greatly control the egress of the site and ingress and egress of the site and synchronize most, um, effectively with the existing traffic pattern. So the applicant is here tonight, if you have any specific questions on that one also.
Question. That North Avenue is not there anymore.
Sorry?
Is, is that the one on down, there's North, cause.
Is it on the cover sheet?
Yeah, I grew up on North Avenue, but didn't this, didn't the hospital cut it off? It, to the right it does, but it's not to the left, if you're going down sixty-one. Am I on the wrong side of the road? It's on the backside, okay, I got you. I got you, I still know that, that's okay. Got you, okay, go another direction, okay, ten-four.
Unless we're faster than Google Maps is with their satellite, which is possible. Yes.
Ask a question about the is there a coordinated plan or, um, you know, design, concept for what's going to happen to state route sixty-one? And all of these new projects we're putting in here because in my humble opinion, and I know it doesn't, that and a quarter, maybe get you a cup of coffee somewhere. Um, or maybe it's half a dollar now, I don't know what, but, um. The, um, yeah, I know, I'm not even talking about going to. But sixty-one should be four-laned at least, maybe not a median, but at least four-laned. And then once you get beyond the new, and I'll be long gone, I'm sure, before they finish the roundabout at Pumpkin Town. But then it should be, uh, uh, in my opinion, a median from there at four-lane and a median all the way to Dallas. But, uh, G dot, um, doesn't ask me my opinion. And, uh, but I do think that for the citizens in Villarica, for the, for our, our welfare and, uh, the betterment of our community, we need to, that should be a four-lane road.
They ask why, why you feel that way, that it should be four lanes versus the one. Do you think it's because of the, um, intersection of Pumpkin Town specifically? Or do you think that it's the flow of traffic on the roadway?
I think it's more the flow of traffic and, and the, the roundabout is going to have a, an impact on it. But, um, there is, have you, I don't know where, what part of town you live in, did you, have you traveled that section from the, the church, uh, down by the railroad track all the way out to Pumpkin Town? Out between, uh, seven-thirty AM and nine-thirty AM or?
Not during those hours, I have not, but I've heard.
You need to travel that, you need to just take some time and spend a couple of hours sitting out there and watching that traffic. And then, starting about three-thirty in the afternoon, come back and look at, at it coming both ways really, but from the other way especially. And, you know, I have come down at four-thirty, five o'clock and traffic has been backed up from Pumpkin Town into Carroll County. From, uh, you know, it's, um, you're down there at the bridge at Sweetwater Creek. And, um, it's, uh, it's amazing to me that everybody thinks, well, it's a, this is an optional thing, no big rush. We all need to four-lane this, but boy, in my mind, it's, it surely does need it.
Well, but that really has nothing to do with this consideration.
No, well, the, it does and, and this is how it's tangential to it.
That's not something that we can.
No, we can't do anything about it, but the more we continue to recommend and approve new developments in here, the worse that congestion is going to get. And I don't know whether, on all the new, this one doesn't actually touch the sixty-one right away, but on all new developments that do, are we asking the new applicants to make provision for an extended or expanded right of way?
Provisions for expanded right of way, that would be in the permitting process of it, um, if it's on a city road versus if it's on a state road.
I'm just saying, I, I wouldn't wanna see us approve something that comes right up to the, and then the state come in and say, well, jeez, we would need another twenty-five feet to do this thing, you know, and you've got a building sitting in there.
I just think that it would be really very premature for us to do that if there's no active, um, inertia from the state to widen the highway.
When I'm dead and gone and, and people are griping about this traffic holdup in here, just remember, you know, that old ball hitting guy, he raised his issue.
Doubt, I don't doubt at one bit that there's a lot of traffic out there, um, and I know that it's extremely unpopular. And I know we're kinda getting a little bit into the weeds, I know it doesn't necessarily have to do with the rezoning, but I will tell you that in urban planning, it's very well known that expanding traffic lanes does not solve a traffic problem. Um, it actually makes it worse. Um, so we wanna not do that. You can see, I, I twenty is a perfect example of this. Um, you expand the lanes, um, the downtown connector is a great example of this, you could have unlimited lanes, but it does not mean that the traffic will go away. It actually makes the traffic problem worse. Um, but there are things that we can do to improve the situation out there, right? So there's, uh, traffic intersection that needs to be changed and that's something the city is actively working on right now. Um, that intersection and try out how to improve that, the bypass route, um, the infamous bypass route, um, hopefully.
That speaks more to the ineffectiveness of government. That by the time they recognize the problem and get around to doing something about it, they're solving a problem they should've solved, i.e. the water sewage in the city of Villarica. They should've solved fifteen, twenty years prior, so I don't know if necessarily more, you can't tell me if we have two lanes right now on the road and somehow tomorrow we instantly had four, traffic would be worse tomorrow. No, it wouldn't be. But if we wait twelve years and go through bureaucratic process and finally have it done, then yeah, it may be. So I don't know if that theory holds.
Well, the bottleneck isn't the roadway and the, and the traffic going up and down the roadway, but we're getting a little into the weeds, but it's really the intersection that's the problem, the intersection is really the traffic flow.
Theory of urban development is not taken into the ineffectiveness of, of city and county and state governments who don't address problems upfront and wait to be reactionary instead of preparation.
I think that might be a total separate issue, but maybe it is the one that, maybe that's what needs to be resolved, I don't know. But kinda getting back into the rezoning part of this, um.
Thank you.
Getting back into the rezoning, um, the applicant is here tonight, um, if you have any specific questions for them, I think it's kinda cut and dry this one with the rezoning. Um, it's just a rezoning request, no annexations, no variances, nothing.
Yes, would you have the applicant come forward, please?
Good evening, commission. My name is John Moore. I live at two twenty-eight North Springs Way in Acworth. This is my first time to appear, um, before the city of Villarica, um, but I've been developing in Carroll County, Douglas County and around Atlanta for the last thirty-five years. Um, our company name is Land Art and that's because we want what we do to be artful and we want it to be helpful and pretty. And so we have a philosophy about senior living that we think is energizing, um, to cities. And that is that rather than people being able to go to a big facility in a bigger city and pay big dollars, they prefer to be near home in a home-like setting where they receive individual care and they're near their families. And so our specific strategy is to do a more rural, um, concept. We actually fit under the state law for personal care homes, which is, in contrast to assisted living, it's the same level of care, but it's more personal and it's a higher, um, staffing ratio. And in each of our facilities, the twenty-four beds that we initially build are individual bedrooms with sitting areas and a, and a, a kitchen and a bar, not where they actually cook from, but, um, but it's, then we help them with, with assisted and daily living, the, the needs that they have for that. So folks are near their homes and then the reason that we provide the apartments, um, that are beside them is because people wanna age in place. And so when they have to make that move, that torturous move out of their home, they wanna know that they also have a place that they can be helped if they're no longer able to do independent living. So, um, that's our concept. Um, turns out that there are one point two million bids for seniors in the U.S. today. And by thirty-thirty, there will be a need for over three point three million. And so that's a coming, but when you get to the numbers here for your town, there's a need for three hundred and seventy-two beds today. That's, it's under, it's underserved by three hundred and seventy-two beds, um, in this, in a ten-mile radius from here. And so we think it's a super necessary, helpful. Of course, we're thrilled to no end that we're straight across the street from the hospital, but not having to be on highway sixty-one. And that our folks can literally just come straight out of North Avenue and deal with their, uh, access to the hot, to sixty-one and to the hospital. Um, we plan on building some doctor's offices right beside it there and we hope that will actually be a more geriatric-type practice and that they will be able to look to our seventy-two residents eventually and as part of their services. And so, um, we think that everything that we're doing is in keeping with the future land use plan. Us, your new zoning ordinance is actually going to be, you know, your new land use plan's going to be adjusting it to this exact zone in any way. So this is really an issue of timing. Um, and we really appreciate your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be thrilled to answer them.
Any questions for the?
Yeah, just the independent living, I, I noticed those, those are gonna be single-level ADA compliant wide doors.
Oh, yeah.
Bathroom handrails.
There's a lot of actually interesting things about it, but yes, these are, there's porches on the front, porches on the rear. Um, and these are, um, these people will still be able to drive and we have one and a, one and a third parking spaces per um, unit there, but we also provide them out of our personal care home kitchens, a, a meal or two a day as, as additional services. And then we also have a check-in service, so we have additional staff that can actually go in and check on folks.
And this commercial out, out space, are you asking that to be zoned general commercial or you asking that to be zoned light industrial office, what?
No, G, GC is actually our request overall, um, but we would be able to put medical, I mean, you know, in that, in that space.
Okay, but what would, I'm just, my question is what would keep you from developing into something else?
We'd be thrilled to restrict it.
Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm, not, cause I.
Under your zoning ordinance, actually nothing, but.
Yeah, that's my point is.
But our goal is to, our goal is to make it into medical offices.
Billy B's Liquor Store one day, I mean, I doubt that would be very attractive to people, that's my point.
Actually providing liquor. I don't even have a comment on that one.
I'd vote, I'd vote, but just the point is, I think you might wanna know that before.
Right, I totally get it. That's awesome.
What, what is the space in the center?
Just, it's actually just courtyard, it's, so it's a gardening area, um, courtyard area and it's just meant to be an amenity. So it's just a lot of green space. Everybody, I remember when I moved out to Texas and I thought I liked it just fine and I flew back into Atlanta and saw the green and a tear came to my eye. You know, I think we're just green oriented here, I just love green.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
Do we need a public hearing, uh, for this too? So anybody that would like to come forward and speak in favor or against this concept, please do so at this time? I see none, we will clonend. I see none, we will clon into public comment, and throw it back to the commission, what is your desire?
Make a motion, recommend the city council approval as presented.
Save it.
Been moved and seconded, that we approve the concept as presented, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the next item, RA 0819, Plan Development, Initial Concept Plan and Final Concept Plan.
All right, so we have a, we have another presentation for tonight, this is for Walton Trail. And this applicant is Walton Communities, and, hold on, I'm trying to find my picture. So, the applicant is requesting a rezoning of the subject property from multifamily residential R14 to Plan Development. The submitted Plan Development Initial Concept Plan and the Final Concept Plan proposes 200 units at a density of 20.1 dwelling units per acre on 9.95 acres of existing developed land, which is currently used as multifamily.
Close that door, please. I'm sorry, Ron.
No, no worries, thanks.
You can keep going on.
All right, so, the property is currently used for, used as the housing authority, it's owned by the housing authority right now, and they have a number of multifamily, almost in the form of townhouse units with multiple buildings. You can get a good look at that on the first page on the map there, of the units that are there. The development is proposed to have a gated entrance, resident clubhouse, playground area, 1.3 acres of open space, a community seasonal planting garden, playground area, and a gazebo. The project proposes a detention pond to capture all the stormwater from the site, and a street vacation of Walnut Drive in order to better utilize the land, so Walnut Drive would go away, and it will be utilized into the property. The project will consist of 110 units of family housing and 90 units of senior housing, directly supporting the comprehensive plans of redeveloping aging sites, providing several housing choices in the community, and providing more senior housing options. Phase one will consist of the senior housing, and phase two will consist of the family And the applicant is here, if you want to hear more from them. So, and I know that, I said earlier that it's owned by the housing authority, which it is, and it would continue to be so from what I understand, but it's, this application is actually from Walton, they're working with the housing authority to redevelop the site.
And Walton would stay on as the management for this project, or are they going to give that over to the housing authority?
They might be best to...
Would you come forward, please?
Would you introduce her, Ron?
Yes, this is Maureen...
Freehill.
Freehill, with Walton Communities.
Good evening, thank you so much for giving us the time to present our project to you this evening. Again, my name is Maureen Freehill, I'm the Senior Project Manager with Walton Communities. We are a multifamily developer with over 30 years' experience in the Atlanta area and greater Georgia, developing multifamily projects, primarily affordable multifamily projects. I know some of you have had a chance to come and tour some of our properties up in Marietta. If you haven't, I certainly would invite you to come look at Walton Reserve, about 20 minutes down the road from here. We always say, don't look at a developer's newest property, look at their oldest property. And Walton Reserve is over 15 years' old right now, and we actually had some trouble trying to find some repairs to be made as part of our re-syndication, which will keep that property affordable for another 30 years. So, what you have before you is the Plan Development Zoning Application for the redevelopment of the public housing Old Town Home site. It's, as Ron outlined, planned to be developed over two phases. We expect one and two-bedroom apartments in the first phase, and one, two, and three-bedroom apartments in the second phase. Both phases will be funded using housing tax credits, and therefore affordable to households making up to 80% of area median income, which for a family of four is about $63,000 a year.
So, average is, 80% is $63,000?
The median, median, not average, the median.
So, it's 80% of the median?
Correct, yes. But incomes will go down to affordability levels for the existing public housing residents that will be, have the right to move into the redeveloped apartments in the community.
Why don't you wait till the train zips by? Not exactly like Interstate 20, but, okay, go ahead.
Certainly, so, all the rents at the property will be based on income, so those rents will be affordable to folks, you know, at the current public housing level and at the 80% AMI level. As Ron also outlined, it'll continue to be owned by the Villarica Housing Authority, though the community itself will be owned in partnership with Walton Communities, who will develop, build, and manage the property for its lifetime. So, let's see here, going on to...
Excuse me, are some of your other properties similarly public housing?
Yes, actually, probably about 40% of the properties we develop are public housing redevelopments, including some of the elevations that we're going to present this evening, they are public housing redevelopment.
So, this would not be unique?
No, this is, this is what we like to do, we like to take old aging housing stock and turn it into new, modern, affordable housing at higher density to provide more opportunities for families and seniors. So, you see here, the, you'll see some of the landscape plan and legend, Main Street coming off of Dallas Highway will provide a walkable streetscape, including oak trees and colorful seasonal planting beds. However, the primary tenant entrance will be on Old Stone Road and will be gated. There'll be a secondary gate, primarily for firetruck and emergency entrance and egress on the north side of the property, at the entrance of the kind of former, well, future former Walnut Drive location. All of the entrances are at the sites of existing curb cuts, and I would also mention to the point concerning the expansion of Dallas Highway potentially, we have allowed for enough of a buffer on that street frontage to allow for potential future street expansion. So, some of the amenities within the property that, we have some examples here from our existing properties are playground, outdoor gazebo and picnic area, seasonal planting areas, as well as a 400-square-foot community garden, which will be operated in cooperation with Tanner Medical's Healthy Live Well programming. Guys have a lot of trains this time of night. I'll just speak a little louder. And so, they're going to help us with managing and maintaining the garden, as well as providing healthy cooking programs for households for seasonal living. There will be pedestrian-friendly ADA sidewalks throughout the property. On the interior, there will be a community gathering area in each phase, as well as a laundry center, a library with computers, and a wellness center, again, operated in cooperation with Tanner Medical Center. You can see here the elevation that we presented for the property, three and four-story buildings, the senior phase will have elevators, the family phase will be walk-up. You can see that 30% of the exterior will be brick, with the balance being hardy plank siding. We will also have fully built-out handicap accessible apartment homes in both phases, about 5% of the homes will be fully handicap accessible. And then, you see here some of the elevations for existing public housing redevelopment sites at Walton Village, and then Walton Reserve, that's, again, our 15-year-old property, that's what our trees in our Main Street at Walton Reserve look like today. And then finally, the signage will be on Dallas Highway, similar to what you see here at Walton Ridge and Walton Green. Walton Green is another public housing redevelopment that we worked with the Augusta Housing Authority on, in downtown Augusta. So, it'll be stone with seasonal plantings and ground lighting. Happy to answer any questions you all might have.
I did have a chance to visit several of the properties at Walton Village, and they're outstanding.
Thank you.
Very nicely done, and I think would be a welcome addition to this community.
Thank you.
Question for you, how many people do you estimate live in the 200 units ballpark, people?
Well, typically, we see in the senior phase, we would have 90 units, approximately 90 to 120 residents, some of those would represent home healthcare aides and things like that. For the 110 family units, we do not permit more than two heartbeats per bedroom, so if it's a three-bedroom apartment, you could have potentially, you know, husband and wife and, you know, four kids in there at a maximum, but that's not typically what we see, what we typically see is, we serve primarily single parents with one to two children.
So, we're looking at 500 people living here approximately, give or take?
Give or take, depending on...
How many people live there now, do you know, there's 50 units?
There's 62 units, and right now, Villarica has actually been allowing for some attrition in planning for the redevelopments, there's about 30 households still on site.
Okay, so there's 60 people living there approximately, right?
No, there's a little bit...
80?
Well, there's only 30 households on site, so there's about, probably about 45, Dick, you have better numbers than I do, about 45 households.
These are all going to be...
Individuals.
It's run by the housing authority, but they're all going to be government subsidized housing, is that fair to say, by some entity?
Well, tax credits, yes, but it's not Section 8, which I'm guessing is probably what you have in mind.
Well, it's a combination, tax credit or Section 8. So, we're essentially going to take, well, we have 62 people who are living in tax-credit homes, subsidized, and we're going to put 500 people in the same spot, and that's supposed to somehow be good? I don't understand how that's good for the city as a whole. I don't mind taking care of our own, but I'm not sure why we're going to attract 400 more people who require subsidized housing to our community. I'd rather have 500 people come and buy houses, and pay taxes, and pay tax rate of individual home. I mean, I'm not saying your properties are great, I know a couple of them, I've been to them, and I'm not against public housing, I've had family live in this public housing, I grew up playing in this public housing. I'm not against it, but I'm not sure as a city as a whole, I don't understand how attractive more people who require subsidies to afford their daily activities. I don't mind taking care of our own, but I'm not sure attracting more people is a good idea, and I don't understand how...
Well, I think that it's important to clarify that there's a big difference between public housing and tax credit housing. The households that live in public housing typically make less than $12,000 a year, and I think that, you know, identified that, you know, folks that would potentially be residing here make up to $63,000 a year. That's a pretty big jump in income for a household, and typically, the households that we see living in tax credit housing are working families. The typical story that we see certainly at Walton Reserve is a single parent that comes in, goes to school, and then buys a house. And so, what you're doing is you're helping build those next-generation homeowners within your community by providing those affordable housing opportunities.
But in the interim, you're not, you're not receiving, until they buy that house, that's just a hope, that's a hope that you have, right? There's no guarantee of that. They can stay there for 15 years and never buy a house, that's possible.
That's true, that's certainly true.
And never receive that credit for 15 years. Okay, that's fine, that's sad ass. Because I'm agree, something needs to happen, those things were built during the Eisenhower administration, I think, or shortly thereafter, and they've been there forever. Something needs to happen, I'm just not sure, quadrupling the size of the community is what we need as a city, and I'm not sure it's going to be attractive to other homeowners or home buyers.
Well, I can tell you, our market studies show that there's a 0% vacancy rate for affordable housing in Carroll County, so there's definitely a lot of demand for affordable housing.
And I know where the other two are located, and you mentioned the one in Cobb, it's near Fair Oaks Park, and the other one's in Austell, if I'm not mistaken.
Walton Reserve is in Austell, that's correct.
And in comparison to the rest of Cobb County, those are not the most affluent areas of Cobb County, are they? So, it hasn't necessarily built some sort of influence around them.
Well, I can tell you that our property, Walton Reserve, is across from a Whole Foods, so, and Walton Ridge that you see here is about a mile and a half from that Whole Foods, so there's definitely, you know, some of the neighborhoods we're building in, again, they're former public housing sites, the city wasn't generally giving out great real estate to public housing authorities in the 50s. But certainly, you know, as we redevelop these sites, they provide a really great asset to the community to build on, for economic development. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Freehill?
I'll just say, I know your company, and you have an excellent reputation, and I'm happy to see someone of your caliber, your quality, involved in this project. This was going to happen one way or the other, and it's already been, its usage has been established for a long time. And so, at least, I feel confident that what's going in there now to replace the existing stock will be high-quality and managed by people who know what they're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Very impressive, very impressive. Thank you very much, Freehill. Any public comments? People would care to speak for or against this project? See none, we'll revert back to the commission, with your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure that we approved this request as submitted for submission to the city council, without recommendation that they approve it.
Sir, a second.
One second.
Been moved and seconded, that we move this forward then to the council, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? Three to one. Staff comments?
I don't really have any comments, and just wanted, I guess, to say, you know, expanding from two lanes to four lanes doesn't necessarily, no, I'm kidding. Just, but if there's any other, you know, comments from you guys related to any of our projects along the way while we're still, while we're getting projects together, and I know you guys don't really see them coming before they come, right, so, but just along the way, to make the process even more comprehensive than what it is...
We hear about them, sometimes people may mention something, or we may see a sign, or somebody says, have you heard they're going to do such and such, but often found that such and such is weeks, or months, or years from actually coming to fruition. But that's how we hear about them, we don't know them until we get these and really look at it.
Then, just, I encourage all of you, if it is a situation like that, just to contact us and just let us know, if you want more information on something, you can always ask for the meeting too.
Thank you.
Tom, would you care to make any comments at this time? And then, we'll open it up to public comments at this time, yes?
Thank you, John. Nancy Nems, 17th Henry Trail, Villarica. I'm actually here to do two things, and...
I promise you, I won't take up the whole ten minutes.
One of the things that some of you already know is that I grew up in a Norman Rockwell Hallmark-type city. As a matter of fact, as a young person, we were actually written up as All-American City in Life Magazine. We were one of the very first cities to have a roundabout, and actually, the very first city in America to have a fan of. And it was an exciting, unique town. On the other hand, the growth was not there. There could have been, but what happened is that many of us, younger people, left to go where we had more opportunities. I know that Villarica has gone from 4,134 people in, actually, what, 2,000, to now having 15, 50. I know that in 30 more, we're expected to have 30,000 in another nine or 10 years. So, and growth is inevitable, we do have Mirror Lake, we do have all of these things, and that's not a bad thing, as long as planning and zoning keeps it within a perspective, and are able to do it in a substantial way that is not going to affect a lot of other people. I love Villarica, I've only been here for 31 years, I came as a new professor to the university, but I'm passionate about it, I don't want to see it go to, as it was in the town I grew up in, a ghost town virtually now when you go back to it, because everybody's left. All the people who wanted to keep it as Norman Rockwell have more have died, and those of us who wanted to go on something else, moved on. I've also been in other towns in Florida, where, three years ago, it took us a half an hour to find our son's grave in Delray Beach, Florida, because of the growth that was there, and you couldn't get through the streets. That's unacceptable. That's one of the things that I want to at least say that, yes, I approve of what you're doing, as long as it's done in conjunction with common sense, and understanding where the growth has to be, and who we're going to be serving, and knowing that we are going to grow, and that's fine. to grow, and that's fine. My second reason for being here is to give you a rationale for what we're going to have as our second Villarica Citizen Symposium. We had one in March, and it was past, present, and future. Without a lot of advertisement, we still had quite a few people attend, where we talked about the 10 sites that we actually had proposed for historic districts, which with Ron's help, we got through, and the city voted on them. We also took a look at Janet giving us a better idea of Main Street, and then, of course, with the city having mostly given us the idea of what the museum was going to look like, and it actually does look like a miniature real museum that you would find in major cities. And that's a good thing as well. Yes, I chair Villarica Historical Preservation Commission. And yes, I have been, been June of 2017 at every single council meeting except one because of the weather. And yet I don't know anything about the city as such, because there are over 25 meetings possible every single month with administration and boards and commissions, not counting service organizations. And we all do our part to make Villarica a great place to live. What I have proposed again is the second symposium, which will be held at Powell Park on November 20th. I apologize for probably not being able to tell all of you in planning and zoning ahead of time, but after talking with Bobby Elliott, we discovered and decided that perhaps there are so many aspects of planning and zoning that we don't know about because we don't come to the meetings. And we don't know what's going on. And if we go to city council meetings, we understand that you're voting, they're voting on your proposals, we understand how much money is being sent on different vehicles and what have you. But what we don't understand is the signs, the scenes behind all of this. So Bobby Elliott will be presenting this symposium at Powell Park on planning and zoning. And I urge you all to attend and to get as many people as possible. It's on our website, it will be on the neighborhood website, I will be speaking perhaps on the radio about it as well, it will be in the newspapers, because that's the only way that people will understand what we're doing. We don't all have time to visit these meetings. And yet we all do need to have a voice. And the only way that we're going to understand and have a voice is by attending. And since we can't attend all of them, we're doing this. In the future, I'm planning on working with Chris, and we're thinking about putting in a citizen academy, much like the police academy that we have now, to run for five weeks, which will give us a chance to highlight more than just maybe two symposiums a year. So that's where we are at this point, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bins. Any other comments?
I'd like to make one before we close.
Okay.
You may have noticed I voted no twice tonight, got outvoted, which is okay. But I want to kind of put on the record while I'm doing that, is I'm not as old as you guys, y'all have me about a few years. But I've been around here long enough to know what I see. And if you were here in 1999, you might look at, I'll give you two comparisons. Give you Douglas County and Calweda County. They were essentially the same place. Interstate ran through both of them, proximity to Fulton County, proximity to the airport. And you fast forward 20 years, which is a more desirable place to live, Calweda. I think that's hands down. I don't think anybody would disagree with that. Better schools, better property. The question then becomes, why? It's because of what they allowed to be built, what they allowed to zone, how they zoned, how they grew, how they built their industry, how they grew their industry. And that is one of the reasons I look at this, because 20 years from now, I will be here, and I hope my children want to live here too, and their children after that, because my family's been in this general area for, I don't know, 150 years or so. So I have an interest beyond just myself. And so sometimes when I vote, I vote with an eye towards the future and I, with an eye towards the past of what I've seen and what I have disliked about what I've seen, what has not worked. Growth is inevitable, I will not disagree with that. We live in a part of the country that's been growing since Sherman burned it down. It has been growing ever since and will continue to, thank goodness. That's good for us all. It means I can make a living here and other people can. But I think we have to be very mindful and cognizant of what we do and how we do and what we approve. And it's not about tap-on fees, it's not about paying for past mistakes, it's about what are we going to do this point forward? And so sometimes with my votes, I'm not just being a curmudgeon, but my wife claims that I am. It's just simply that I have seen some of the errors of other people's ways and I don't want to go down the same path. And I want something better for, not only for my life and my lifetime, but my kids' lifetime, that they want to stay. And there's a place for them to work and there's a place for them to live and there's a place where they want to invest. That's one way. I want to put that on the record.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments? Move or adjournment?
I'll second that.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Raise your hand. To adjourn.
Somebody back this year.
Well?
That's your reward for being successful, man. As I, sorry. As long as I can, I'll give. But get to a point I can't, I'll give.
Now, speak up. Are you going to?